Could I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So is Deb and Maria. So, seeing that it looks like we may not have anyone ready for comments at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Harrison.
Yes, good evening, everyone. As Mr. Hannah referenced, tonight is our elementary end of year update or presentation and has become our custom that we wrap up the school year with hearing from the good work of each of our levels of schools. Tonight, we're fortunate to have our elementary school leaders here with us. They're going to talk about some of the great work that they've led this year. Like a lot of the work that we're doing in the district, there's always evolution. So just as last week, there was a new layer to some of the work that Dr. Core and the administrative team did related to student performance with some different windows in to how kids are achieving or growing.
Very helpful.
Tonight, there's going to be a bit of a different type of look at looking at the progress of the work that's been led in our schools over the course of time, but then yet another glimpse into that work with the utilization of data. So we're excited for this opportunity. And Dr. Core, do you want to say if you want to kick things off? Are you good to?
This is it? We're going?
We're going. I just want to know your new husky voice, which is...
You like it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was out singing all night.
We're striving to be out of here in 35 minutes, okay? And let me tell you, you couldn't make those three people any happier for a variety of reasons. So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. So tonight, we are shifting gears and we have created a presentation that I have to say was well-received this morning at Curriculum Council. So we're excited to share it with all of you as well. You've seen the paper copy or the electronic copy, but clearly tonight Deb, Andrea, and Joyce will bring some detail to the slides and some of the data that is going to be presented. So I actually was going to go through this slight, I was going to, always going to go a little fast, but honestly, with nobody in the audience, I'm going to go even faster. So the opening slides to both the elementary and the secondary presentations are the same, and they're really the foundation. They're for those people who have never come to a board meeting before and now want to, you know, understand the background, or maybe somebody who's watching from home.
Good, we never want to presume.
Never. So, everything that we do, everything that we do is based in the foundational work that we have been focused on for the last six or seven, five or six or seven years. And as a cohesive administrative team, we consistently approach each of our initiatives with a way of thinking that now includes curriculum instruction and assessment and data. So tonight, we're going to share with you examples of the work that's been done at both Dow's Lane and Main Street School that we've built on for the last several years and can show some baseline and some general information that really reflects the work, but also the change over time that we're seeing over the course of a year. So all of this focus starts with our strategic, with the strategic objectives. So these objectives are the guiding principles for our district and for all the work that happens K through 12. We constantly seek goal alignment. We look to align our strategic objectives, our theories of action, and theories of action with what is going on in our schools on a daily basis. Our overarching goals have not changed because we believe the reason that they're overarching is be, oh, the reason that they're overarching is because there is a lot of depth and breadth behind them, and therefore their goals that you don't meet in one year, you shift your focus from year to year so that over time, you're meeting them in a cohesive and coherent way that ultimately supports students. So instructional practices, balanced assessment, and use of data. That is the heart of each one of these goals. Our theories of action have been in place, and we seek on a regular basis, both through our curriculum instruction assessment, but also daily life, to ensure that our students are developing in ways that support the expectations of our goals, those strategic objectives, and the theories of action. So I love this slide, I'll use it forever. The Well-Developed Brain. It is all about the Well-Developed Brain, and our work focuses on developing the brains of our students, but also as educators, maintaining that we are evolving, that we are growing, that we are learning, so that we're sure that we are bringing the best practices to our classroom and we're meeting those goals. We focus on these four learning goals, which we now build into all of our unit planning, and it now sits as, again, as a foundational piece to the practices that we embed every day.
And if I could just add, when this was shared a few years ago, was a real breakthrough for us in terms of the conversations that we have, so this has been really useful. Slide.
Thank you. We continue to build our assessment practices. So one of the things that's worth noting, if you go back to our prior presentations from the last few years, what we did in our end-of-year presentations was the time-consuming process of sharing with you anecdotal data. So, you know, qualitative, there's qualitative and quantitative data. So in the past, we focused a lot more on the qualitative focus. We gave you examples. We gave you evidence-based examples, which were systemic examples. They were not one-offs, but they were still anecdotal in nature. So our balanced assessment system in the past, we actually showed more of our formative assessment, the practices that are happening daily in our classrooms, as well as some of the summative. Tonight, you're going to see the balance of that, which is some of the, how data drives our decision-making and practices as well. So here we are. It's the using data, increase the use of data to inform instruction and planning. As Andrea, Deb, and Joyce share their examples, they will share specific examples of how this work is being done and what is the result. So I'm going to start by actually introducing one piece of the presentation before I turn it over to Deb and Andrea, and this piece has a combination because it's at both Dow's and Main Street. And our program assessment for our K-5 counselor. So I wanted to put this up, be, up in front of everybody because as Deb, Andrea, and Joyce speak, they are going to refer to the practices of the counselor, the lessons that she's been doing and the work that's been done in just this first year. Our program assessment for K-5 has, I think, I want to start by thanking the Board of Education because our foresight in having this person come onboard a year before we actually had to have this work in place has been tremendous. I'm looking forward to sharing with you in June, the K-12 counseling plan that will embed the K-5 focus as well, but having our new counselor as part of this work has been tremendous. And as a result, she has been able to connect with our 612 counselors, but more importantly, align the work. So we are looking at how do we, what are we doing in kindergarten and how do we move up through the grades, setting goals at each grade level for counseling and for the counseling curriculum. This position evolved quickly into classroom lessons and evolved quickly into the RTI process and Tier Two intervention. So again, you'll hear really nice examples. So our program assessment for K-5 counseling moves us into next year, and what we're looking forward to is not just having lessons and instruction that's based on the ASCA standards, which is the standards that we're using, but also that we are continuing to grow the implementation of having a K-5 counselor in our schools. And one of the conversations that we had a lot this year was what is the difference between psychologists and social workers and counselors? And so as part of this work, I think you'll hear some examples of what makes a counselor's role different than some of the other roles that we have in our school. So I wanted you to just see where we're going. We, again, the approach was, the approach on the part of our administrators, as well as the Board of Education, which was to create the position of counselor. We had some implementation steps that we planned to take and we were successful in implementing, as well as identifying the results that we had anticipated. We move into next year with, working with an actual plan, and that was the piece, and I want to say even maybe last year, someone said, "Well, what is the plan? How are you going to do that?" And we very openly and honestly said, "We need the person here with us doing that work. We can't create the plan and then hand it to someone." We needed the person with the expertise, the person with the background and experience to be working side-by-side with the building administrators, teachers, as well as myself and the other counselors. So you'll hear some really nice examples as we move forward through the presentation. So with that...
I just want to say, I really appreciate with this, being a new position, to get this overview. It's very helpful.
Good, thank you. Okay. Dow's Lane.
Where the journey begins. Do you want to plug? Okay. First and foremost, thank you so much for this opportunity. We always appreciate the end-of-year where we can take a look back, not just at the current year, but this was really a wonderful opportunity to take you a few years back and really show the progression over time and how our work has deepened at Dow's Lane. So Andrea and I are going to be presenting together, and we'll take some turns, and then we'll welcome any discussion. So let's get started. So this slide really is something that Andrea and I are extremely proud of. Starting in 2016, you'll see the progression onto the current school year. And what this slide shows you is how the work of the building has really deepened over time. So when we take a look at how we've been implementing instructional practices that elevate student thinking and understanding, we started this journey by really looking at a targeted goal for our school. And that began in 2016, 17, with really getting grounded in Rubicon Atlas, really getting grounded in the scope and sequence of our curriculum, and getting Stage One as secured into Rubicon as possible, taking a look at the work that we currently did on a daily basis for both reading, or for three, reading, writing, and for math.
Can we just, in two sentences or three sentences, say, you know, Rubicon Atlas is a platform, online platform, that retains your unit planning and your curriculum, and UBD stands for...
You said it really well.
Understanding by Design, and EQ is...
Essential Questions.
Essential Questions.
So Rubicon Atlas is a warehouse system. It holds our curriculum. We were able to design our curriculum using our common framework of the Understanding by Design model with our three stages of instructional design. Stage One, which is the knowledge, skill, and the essential question during understandings that we expect all children to know and understand. Stage Two is assessment, I'm sorry, Stage One includes teaching thinking, very important. Stage Two is assessment, and Stage Three are instructional activities and how we build that work, always in connection back to the essential question, which is truly the elevation of thinking that we want students to do on a daily basis across their day, into the different content areas.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. So for us, it really began with that journey, with really exploring Stage One, grounding all staff members in the understanding and a common understanding of teaching thinking, and getting our scope and sequence established so that we can create that groundwork for a well-written and comprehensive curriculum. Moving forward, we really knew that it was time to explore the thinking that we wanted students to do. So we grew in our expectations in that our essential questions would become, would be at the forefront of our instructional design. If we have a well-developed unit planner, all of our teaching thinking aligns back to this essential question, and we have connections between the knowledge, skill, the meaning-making, and the transfer and those opportunities that we scaffold back to really teach into the thinking that we want students to have. And how that EQ became really a mirror, a mirror for us to establish the thinking, to do our own self-reflection as staff in the work that we do. So it was really about how we were implementing those essential questions into active learning, starting with having them open and present and posted in classrooms, to the way we were actively using them before instruction began, and then to conclude instruction, and taking a look at the evidence of student thinking over time, always to dip ourselves back into curriculum revision. That's always the goal. We use student work and we use student thinking to be our guide to how we want to go back into our unit planners and examine the curriculum that we're designing for students on a daily basis, which moved us to this year, which really has been a cathartic year. You do a lot of foundational work with laying the common language, really digging deep into Stage One, really looking at the work that we want students to do, the thinking that we want them to do as a result of our instruction. And our goal has always been that our unit planners would drive our instruction. They're upfront and present, they're a part of our daily work, we use them as part of our pre- and post-observation process. We're always referring back in our learning sessions, and we're grounding ourselves always in reflecting back to our unit planner and having those up in front and next to planet, unit planners, and next to our data collection, and always reflecting back. So for us, this year has really been about implementation and how we've moved, you know, really taking a unit planner from parts to a whole is the best way that I can explain it, and now taking a holistic approach to say, if our work, we're going to stand on it, and we're now going to say that this is the work that's guiding our daily instruction.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
And I guess it's more directed to Raina. Should the Board expect in the fall that we'll see a continuation of this and it'll be nineteen twenty, or what, a continuing in 2021? So in other words, is this the new framework or format? Because I think it works, and I'm curious if, when the presentations come to the Board in the fall, should we expect a continuation of this chart?
We can talk about that. You know, I think that from, based on your feedback, what the principals all have, K through 12, is that, those are the charts. That's the work that they create every year. Every summer, we start an administrative retreat and we build out. So that exists, we just change the format so you can see the continuum that as Well-Developed Brains around this work, we kind of have this continuum in our head. So I think your feedback brought it to light that, mm, that's not, it's not so obvious to you as it, as I think it is to us. So certainly, there's no downside to do it. There'll be some goals that would should, should go away, you know?
Well, that's part of what I was wondering, and then, because maybe one of it was, goes back to the fall, it just shows that it's completely the goal.
Right, something could go, some things can go away. Some things could go on and on.
It's not completed, it's maintaining and...
Exactly. And some of that is true, right, tending. I mean, we talk about that, that, you know, sometimes we, and we've talked about, like with foundations, you know, we're being really careful to tend to foundations. We did the implementation, we're paying, but if we don't pay attention, it's really easy for, for things to slip by the wayside. So we're always balancing that having it there, tending it, or it being like gone. Thank you.
So parallel to our first goal, and is always the work of assessment. Assessment is the way in. It's really the way in which we can measure Stage One, the knowledge, the skill, and the thinking that we want students to be doing as a result of our instruction. So again, what we share with you is our, our journey. And when we began this process around a balanced system of assessment, it really was about creating a shared definition and understanding collaboratively with staff, exploring the different types of balanced assessment, formative versus summative, qualitative versus quantitative, and taking a look at our unit planners, almost in some sense, an audit of what we currently were using to identify where are our strengths. We marvel in mine. Where are we using assessment, and where do we see opportunities to really build a balanced system of assessment that will include self-reflection and also the use of our assessment data? Moving on to the following year, which was the last school year, we really dug back into those unit planners. It was our year to examine Stage One, but now it was the year to look at the alignment between Stage One and Stage Two. And these were opportunities to look at our rubrics, to look at student exemplars, to identify with some consistency what our expectations were, and were we aligning our assessments to the thinking that we wanted students to be doing? And on every grade level, we had experiences through our unit planner revisions where we opened up our original assessments, and we had teachers really reflecting on how there was a misalignment between what we were asking students to do as a result of our instruction, and was that truly assessing what we were trying to capture in Stage One, the knowledge, the skill, the meaning-making, the thinking? And those were opportunities for staff on grade levels, as well as across-grade levels, to really take a look at our assessments, redesign them oftentimes, so that they can truly get at the heart of what we were looking to assess for students. And then for that assessment data to be usable, we needed to make sure there was alignment. We continued our process this year, and that's where we're not only aligning our assessments and ensuring that our assessments are truly getting at what we want students to know and be able to do and think, but now it was, so now what? So now do we, what do we do with this data? And our journey this year has, has really been around how we use assessment data to inform our instruction and continuously dip us back in to the curriculum revisions, going back to Stage One, continuously having those conversations within grade levels and across grade levels about where we want students to be performing, and looking at the new standards and aligning ourselves to the expectations, and taking a look at what we do, how we want to grow, and how we are actively using. So for one example, this year with our FNP, our Fanta-Son-Pennell, which is a benchmark system of assessment for reading levels, really going through tremendous amount of consistency training, training that was not just about how to implement and score, but it was really around the consistency in which we were establishing baselines and establishing the criteria at each grade level, and helping teachers to really explore how FNP is not just a system of assessment, the data that we can glean from our FNP and our running records, how that informs our reading instruction, and how that can really build bigger reading muscles over time. And it's been a wonderful way in to really look at our assessment over time of our readers. So what this slide shares for you is just a snapshot of the different types of data that we currently use at Dow's Lane. These are done in, under, within systems, systems of collecting data school-wide, and what we'll share with you is that this data really takes a look at school-wide, really bringing us down to a grade level, bringing us down to class level, and then bringing us even more granular to individual student level. So you're going to see examples through Andrea and I when we progress through our slides, specific examples of how our AIMS Web progress monitoring data helps to inform instruction, but also helps us look at grade levels at a glance and identify where those strengths, again, always marvel in mind. We always look for strengths, and then we're always using our data to mine for where are those areas of gaps, and how can this inform our curriculum revision? FNP, as I shared, has been, it's a foundation of reading instruction, and the more we can do our work around Fanta-Son-Pennell and the information that it provides us, the deeper that we can build our readers. We're also going to just give some snapshots with the other data that we use, specifically our mid- and end-of-unit module data for math, foundations and the role that that plays in creating a, a full picture of student progress. We can look at data individually, but what we really try to do through our RTI process is to create a whole picture. And each data set, each set of data can give us information about students. But there's also the piece of assessment that goes to the qualitative, and it goes to the student as a whole child, and the ways in which this year, we really began to explore our own student management systems and how we're using our forms, our stop-and-think forms and our student reflection forms, to identify the patterns and trends of behaviors and needs that fall more into that social emotional piece, and where are our students struggling and how that informs our Tier One, our Tier Two, and our Tier Three responses to the needs of our students. And then certainly, it's our report cards. We really elevated not only our academic scores and creating consistency, but our behaviors that promote learning, and the roles that those habits of mind play in daily instruction, and creating even more consistency around how we score and how we really assess students for how they're using their habits of mind. And then ultimately, the, the work that goes on every day, those anecdotal moments, those conferences, those exit tickets, the self-reflections that students do, the closure that we provide at the end of lessons and the introductions to kind of get a sense of where students are at any given moment. A wonderful mentor once said, "Every moment is ripe for assessment." And when you're working with early elementary students, it's so true. Every observation, every move that they make is, informs the work that we'll do with them on a daily basis.
So at Dow's Lane and at Main Street, we have very healthy RTI programs. RTI Response to Intervention, which is also called MTSS now, Multi-Tiered System of Support. It's our program and our system that supports our struggling students. So we have different tiers in the RTI system. We benchmark or assess our students three times a year, fall, winter, and spring, and during those benchmarking times, we use multiple assessments, it's never one measure. As Deb was talking about, we're using AIMS Web, we're using FNP, math modules, and then we sit and meet as data teams three times a year to talk about the students, especially the struggling students, the students that are not performing on grade level. So what you're looking at now is our RTI reading data from the fall to the winter. So the first two columns show our Tier Two students. Those would be students scoring below the 35th percentile, and the Tier Three students, usually scoring below the 10th percentile. And as you'll notice, from the fall to the winter, we started to see less students. So we saw a reduction in the students being seen. The total first-to-third graders being pulled out for RTI support in the fall was 57 for reading, and in the spring, it was only 49. So we had a decrease of 14 percent. We did not include kindergartners in that figure because we don't pull kindergartners in the fall. Of course, it's developmental, and they're just learning what school is like, so we wait. This is our math data, also RTI data. So we have Tier Two on the left from fall to winter. Again, you see a decrease in the number of students pulled, and our Tier Three on the right side. And again, we had 39 students receiving math interventions in the fall, we had 28 in the winter, actually, and it's a 28 percent reduction. So our interventions are working, our explicit instruction is working, the small group, the one-on-one, figuring out exactly what the student needs for that extra support is closing the gap, what they need. All right. And our counseling data.
So this slide does not do justice to the amount of work that goes on behind the scenes, and I'd like to echo for Dr. Harrison and Dr. Core, our absolute thanks for the addition of a school counselor and the opportunity that this has provided our students at Dow's Lane. Before I speak to this data, I would like to speak to what we would consider Tier One. So this, what this slide shows are our Tier One students, but before we can get to Tier Two, I'm sorry, Tier Two, I'd like to speak to just briefly those Tier One opportunities, those opportunities that our school counselor has provided for all students. So when we refer to Tier One, it's the opportunities for all. It goes on in the classroom, it's done in partnership with the teachers. Our school counselor has pushed into every classroom on every grade level to really secure what our common language is around our habits of, our habits of mind, our mindfulness, and how we help students to develop socially, how we help them to identify their emotions, how we help them to identify with each other, and really set that foundation for building the skill of empathy. And I'm very specific to share that we know that empathy is developmental, and when we're working with early elementary students, we scaffold back empathy to really dig into what kindness and respect is all about, how to be a good listener, and how to look around you and be mindful about the experience of others. And we know that our littlest ones, they really just see themselves, and in those moments of struggle, it is just about them. And it's really helping them to understand their role and identifying what they're feeling in that moment, and how our school counselor has been able to support that work in each and every classroom. It was through that experience and the relationship that our school counselor has built with teachers, as well as our collective work around really studying our student management forms and our stop-and-thinks, and the ways in which students, identifying where are those patterns and trends, where are our students struggling, where we can identify that work as Tier One, where do all children need support in these areas, and then where did we start to surface where students needed more support? So that brings us to this slide, and where our numbers may feel small, and we're just at the start, we're working really hard to develop our criteria for how we're identifying students who need that additional support, and that could be in-the-moment support, where we're responsive to a particular incident, but then there's those longer-term, the broader type of topics where we can identify what we would expect the norm to be for K through third graders and how they approach and respond to struggles, and who are those students that are struggling? We have identified through our early process, nine students that were receiving additional support with our school counselor. We've used both a push-in model, where we do targeted work with a class around class community, around establishing relationships, but we've also done some one-to-one coaching, where we've identified students that need some explicit work around building empathy, managing anxiety, ways in which they are communicating with others, children who their first response is through physical, and we really want to help these little ones to be able to truly identify what they're feeling and make their choices in response to what they're going through in that moment. We are, we're so proud of this work, and this really is something to feel great success. We are, we're so proud of this work, and this really is something to feel great success. To have nine students at an early elementary level work in such an intensive way with our school counselor and reducing that, those are the same nine students, we had 67% fewer students in need of that one-to-one explicit support of our school counselor. We progress monitor through check-ins and through student self-reflection, and always with the opportunity for our little ones to reengage in the same situations where they were struggling, on the playground, in the classroom, and opportunities for them to feel good and to build, instead of reading fluency, it's their social emotional fluency, and how they're able to respond to the same situation in a different way. Our work continues, because with every child that we progress monitor and we support to exit, we're identifying students that are still in need of that support. So I offer this as a snapshot of just a moment in time, but it's really at the beginnings of some really wonderful work going on at Dow's Lane.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Would that, so not to, as it relates to the counseling data, when you talk about how you decided what the tier two, where you would make that cutoff for need for these one-to-one interventions, how, how do the teachers come to understand the definitions of those behaviors? And what model are you using to structure that? So is that the ASCA that you mentioned at the beginning?
So always relating back to our ASCA standards, what we really used as a first go this year were the foundations of our character building program and the identification of the knowledge and the skill that we want all children to know and be able to do as a result of strong character building, mindfulness, and habits of mind. So that was our entry point for this year as we're building our program. And I think for us, what we started to identify were those patterns and trends. So for us, it was collaborative work we did with our staff during faculty meetings. Our school counselor was wonderfully involved in sharing out some professional development around the work that she does as a counselor. We had some real open and honest conversations with staff around comfort level with working with students when they're presenting some of these more, I guess, more targeted struggles. And how do we respond in the moment that feels supportive, while also recognizing that our teachers are teachers? And school counselors have an amazing skill set, and that's why we have them, and how they can help with the professional development of all staff, but how we look to our school counselors for that skill set that they have to do counseling, and what that means to work with a student and support their social emotional well-being, while they're also addressing topics that can be heavy, and they can be vulnerable, and they can sometimes, at first, create more struggle when you're trying to unpack what the larger issue is. So in a, in a broad glance, we used what we currently have as our foundation for tier one at Dow's Lane. What we're looking to grow and develop is more explicit around the ASCA standards and the goals that we're developing K-12.
So does that additional development that you're referring to mean that you're ensuring that all teachers are going to apply? So look at things in the same way? So how do you, how do you say, ensure that, you know, a kid who's identified in, say, second grade for needing some special coaching is being so followed through with, and that any teacher in any class would, would see the same things in that situation or in that group of skills that the child needs to work on? I hope my question is clear.
Yeah, I mean, I think some of that, what you speak to, I could use the same model that we would use to inform or train staff in any type of curricular program. It's really about identifying what are the knowledge and skills and the thinking that we want, and it's about consistency and engaging with staff in some professional development within a grade level and across grade level to identify the continuum and what that looks like as for a kindergartner, what that looks like as a third grader. I think that's work over time. I think when we rolled out foundations, we used a similar model. And how we support each other and how we look at examples of student scenarios in which we can build consistency around our approach. And it speaks to our comprehensive character building program. At this point, I would say that the work happens on a daily basis in the conversations that we have through our child study team, which is part of our RTI process, the way in which we have our TRT process, where teachers bring students to each other to examine the struggle and to help and collaborate around the types of interventions and ways in which we can assist children. And then ultimately bringing a child to PST, which is our larger problem-solving team, and collaborating around the ways in which we can address more holistically, bringing in more support, our psychologists, our social worker. But it's over time, and those experiences grow, and we can collaborate and learn together as a professional learning community to really support the consistency of our approach.
So if you took this on a, I mean, clearly, we've only had the counselor for one year. So thank you for the explanation first. And if I, if I understand what you're saying, what that means is the work has begun, but there is additional professional development that will need to be done in this area, and that we have. So you start with a, a plan which you're developing in-house rather than something that we're sort of bringing in a whole cloth from somewhere else?
Well, I think it speaks to what Raina shared to the start. We have been taking the year to really examine our K-12 counseling program. And we're looking forward to sharing in that work, and really the deepness and the depth of the thinking that has been done, K-12, and as we build a continuum for what our school counseling program looks like at each of the grade levels. And it's through that work that we can move on and create a plan for full implementation. And then we monitor, and we'll have the same type of program assessment that we've had for other, other areas of work, like PLTW and school counseling. We continue that same process with looking at our work, our goals, and assessing as we go.
So there's just some, I have a question, which I'm not quite understanding. When you first started this presentation, you thanked the board for adding this position, because you do need this person in the position to help build the systems, which I totally understand. I was a little surprised when I read this presentation with the numbers with tier, students receiving tier-two intervention counseling. Because I just, just had made the assumption that you weren't there yet. So, I mean, you've been very clear over the years what you guys use to assess kids for tier-two interventions, students academically. What I'm not understanding, and maybe you can't answer this right now, is what is the criteria? What do you have in place that you're making the determination that the students, these students near, need tier-two intervention with the counselor? Because that is the missing, I'm not understanding that.
So we are using currently our student management forms. So students' own reflections based on incidents that occur throughout the day, at recess, at lunch, in the classroom. Some of them are teacher referrals, opportunities where through PST, we look at students over time, students that may come as an academic, where they might come to PST with an academic struggle. And when we really unpack it, we find that there's a social and emotional piece to this student that really needs to be supported so that we can help them access their learning. So right now, we are building it. And for Dow's Lane, we were very slow and steady as we really just used our counselor at first, for the first half of the year, to really push into that tier-one common language, working during our faculty meetings for our school counselor to present back to staff the work that she was doing ahead, having the teachers present during her tier-one lessons to collaborate with children and be present for the types of conversations and discussions that students were bringing to the table. And then we were really, we were, we were really looking for any type of quantitative and qualitative data that could be used to create criteria for children. It was patterns and trends. It was the frequency in which students were having referrals. It was those students that surfaced multiple times, even with other interventions, where we've done mindfulness and reset, and we've had discussions, and there's been parent intervention, but yet we're still not seeing a response. We're not seeing a change in those behaviors. Those, that to us is an indication that a child needs another level of support. So just like in the classroom, if we delivered instruction and we saw that they were still struggling in some way, we would take a look at our tier-one instruction, what's going on in the classroom, how can we differentiate? And if they're still struggling, we have to look outside the classroom to provide that layer of support. So we're using that same model and approach. For us this year at Dow's Lane, we tried to go with the data that we have. What are we currently collecting that's right at our fingertips that could help us understand what are the patterns and trends for students? And how do we begin to identify who's struggling with some very explicit social emotional skills?
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
So this report is showing some of our Ames Web data. So what you're looking at is the Ames Web Plus system and their triangle of tiered support. The one on the left is the fall data, and the one in the middle is winter. And of course, spring is empty because we haven't done it yet. So on the left, you see a little bit of red at the top, that's tier three, a medium-sized portion of yellow, tier two, and a semi-large portion of green, tier one. Now, as we talk about tier one, the entire triangle is tier one. When we talk about the counselor offering tier one to the classrooms, that's everyone in the school, that's all 520 children, receiving the same excellent tier-one instruction. Then at the very top, where the yellow meets the green, there's a little bit of tier one that's struggling, and it might even cross the line into tier two, that a teacher might be doing some explicit interventions with. Those would be the tier-one plans. What you see from the left to the middle is a change in the tier transition. That's really the name of the report. It's a tier transition report of second-grade reading. And you're seeing, when we got to the winter, the green got larger, the yellow's a little smaller, and there's a tiny, tiny speck of red. So again, our interventions, our RTI approach, our small group reading support in second grade was very effective from our tier transition from fall to winter. And of course, spring hasn't been done. Now you're looking at kindergarten numeracy. Same tier transition report from Ames Web Plus in the fall. This was our triangle for our kindergartners with their early numeracy skills. We had some students that were securing on grade level in the green, some that were below the 35th percentile in the yellow, and a tiny portion that was below the 10th percentile in red at the very top. And as you'll notice, when we went into our winter testing, the whole triangle has shifted. And the true power of this data was shown at our data meetings when we showed this to each teacher with their own class, not on a grade level, as you're seeing. So each teacher was able to see the tier transition of their own classes in reading and math, and it was so powerful, you had to see their faces light up. So it was a celebration of data. The reason the one on the right is yellow is because when this was printed, one child was tested, and that child happens to be in the yellow domain, so the whole triangle went yellow. But we're not finished yet, we just started our spring testing. This is another form of data that we use. This is our math module data. What you're looking at is a sample from third grade. This is at the class level. So this was a third-grade class and their module three data, it's multiplication work. The left side is showing the mid-module data on the rubric out of 16 points. Those are students' actual scores. The middle score, the middle column, is showing the end module data of module three and the rubric scores. So from the mid-module to the end module, teachers are always looking at the data, assessing, changing their instruction. This is informing their practices in the classroom. So a typical student, you could see the average increase was 10% from the mid-module to the end module. Of course, there's variation. Some students go up, some students go down. A student that, that might have gone down by just two points looks like, you know, they've dropped, you know, 13%, but it might have been one problem, it could have been an error. But this is going to inform our, our teacher's instruction. So this is just a sample of another piece of data that we're using as our math module work. All of the grade levels complete these math module data forms, and they analyze it with Christine Rosner, our math coach, at Math Learning Sessions. So they look at questions and problems and student responses, and again, they're looking at trends to see what's going on. This is my favorite. So this is a snapshot of first grade, of a first-grade student. So now we're at the student level. This is a mosaic of a student, and this is how we look at every child at Dow's Lane. So this is student A. The very top portion shows this child's foundations unit assessments. Anything below 80% according to foundations is failing. So even if it's just marking and not spelling, they consider the child has not mastered the skills. So as you'll see in the foundations data, the student failed the first unit test, gained a little momentum up to unit four, and then five, six, and seven was on a little precarious level there. But of course, in eight and nine, the child picked up their speed. So the instruction in the classroom and the foundations was working. The bottom-left corner, you see Ames Web Progress Monitoring. This is a student that's actually in tier two. So this child is receiving tiered instruction with the reading interventionist also. And that chart with the dots that go up, down, up, down is the child's progress monitoring by the interventionist. So in collaboration with the classroom teacher, the child was improving in their oral reading fluency. And as we know, children don't grow on a straight trajectory. It's a little up, a little down, and so on, until she moved right into above her goal line. Then the far side on the right shows you the F and P data, which is also fascinating when you put together the whole mosaic of the child. The child in first grade started at an independent reading level D, which is on the lower end, really more end of kindergarten. By the winter, the child had moved into a confident E. Hmm, not too much growth. But, but by March, the child has, has jumped to an H. And the March jump to an H correlates with the time the child started to gain momentum with the foundations and the progress monitoring and the explicit instruction. So when you put it all together, along with the observations of the child in the classroom and the formative instruction, this is growth.
I love how excited she gets. Plus, we love growth. There's nothing better than when a student in first grade, really, some magic happens. And that was a picture of that magic. It just really starts to come together with some real good explicit responsive instruction. So our final slide is our program assessment for PLTW K-2. Again, with great thanks to the budget last year, we were able to complete our continuum of PLTW and bring it to our kindergarteners through second graders, completing our, I'm at a loss for my word, our, our K-12 PLTW continuum. So we engaged in a program assessment this year, knowing that this was the year for full implementation, always using approach, implementation, and then looking at our results. So with our 2018-19, it was really around increasing those opportunities for our students, in particular K-2, around STEM instruction and having that position created K-2. The implementation was magic. To be in that PLTW classroom and to witness students working within those two units of study across the year that really touched upon the engineering and the computer science standards that we're looking to address as part of the next-generation science standards. It was really around providing that training for PLTW and then having all of the PLTW's teachers involved in decisions related to PLTW long-term across the district. And what we found across this year were just these remarkable opportunities for our students to demonstrate some of the most powerful 21st century skills. And when you see a kindergartner, first grader, second grader, engaging in work, and the feedback that we've had from teachers, including skills like problem-solving, designing, collaborating, making meaning together, students are able to make mistakes and be flexible thinkers to actually try out and implement some of their design in real 3D and really bring those types of design, that design thinking to life. And one of the other important connections that this made was for teachers to be in, present in those classrooms for each and every PLTW session, growing in their knowledge of the next-gen science standards and the opportunities where we were also seeing such a true and authentic connection to science and the opportunities that our students were having on a weekly basis to engage in this type of thinking. It has been truly wonderful to see students who sometimes may be in RTI, and they may be struggling with making that progress in reading and/or math. And when they're in that PLTW classroom, seeing them come to life in a different way as a learner, much like we see through the arts and through music and through the art class, has really been a wonderful part of the school experience at Dow's Lane. So as we look to next year, we were looking to continue to implement the units that we rolled out this year and continue to consider the alignment to the next-generation science standards, New York State standards, and then looking to continue to include our team of PLTW teachers in this work and assess the addition of some more units and where that can fit in, in a continuum that addresses the work that we're looking to have students do. And then ultimately, it will be a decision-making process. And this has been a wonderful frame. And this has been a wonderful frame for us to take a look at the work that we've done in just one year. And I would be remiss, Andrea and I, if we didn't give a special shout out to Alyssa Fisher, who took on this PLTW K2 position and really brought her own special touch and some large amount of dedication to bringing this to our children each and every day. So that is what we offer you. Thank you.
Again, thank you for a new program and a chance to understand the work that occurred this year.
Thank you.
Do you, I'm sorry, yeah, do we want to ask some questions? Brian, did you have a question you want to ask?
Okay, so I just, I have at least, I have one question. I don't know if it's for Deb and Andrea, maybe even for Raina. First of all, this was a very good presentation, welcome change, I think the whole board, I presume just speaking for everyone, really appreciates it and it's very helpful. I guess the one thing is for me to help further understand the data, like so for example, could you pull up the kindergarten tier transition report? So obviously, I see the growth because the green is getting bigger. I guess as a board, or at least for me, I think what would be helpful is also to understand, where does it fit in the overall picture? I recognize that not every child is going to progress to a green, but are we expecting that it should be 85%, 80%, 90%? I think they have that further context around it going forward. Would be helpful so we understand not just how we're progressing within our school, but how that looks compared to whatever the appropriate benchmark is, whether it's regionally, nationally, or whatever it may be.
So when we worked with Jim Wright, the RTI guru that had worked in the district for the past few years, he would say that any district should not have more than 15 to 20% of their students in an RTI system. And if we had more than, excuse me, 20% of our students in an RTI system, we really have to look at our curriculum and our classroom instruction and what's going on. We at Dow's Lane have been averaging somewhere between 9 and 12% of the school, so we are always below that. And we're always analyzing the students and how they're doing in relationship with the programs and the math modules and what they're learning in the classroom. Because we really want great instruction in every classroom and that's what we're trying to guarantee so that the struggling students, the students that may have gaps, they might have come from other districts, different programs, or they were not able to attend to learning at some point in time and therefore, they need to have that re-instruction, you know, re-teaching and reinforcing of those skills to close the gaps and catch up.
Thank you.
Very helpful context.
My only comment, and I guess, I don't know if it's a comment or a question to follow up, is that we've commented in the past that one of the challenges for us as a board is to look at the presentation on student performance data, which was given last week, and then to look at the end of the year report that's given, in this instance, tonight. And somehow, as a board, sit back and say, okay, so how are we doing when you look at student performance and you look at examples given like today at the end of the year? And you, and we know in your presentation that when you're using data and you're looking at it on a school-wide basis, you're looking at it on a grade level, a class level, on an individual level. So this helps us understand how it is as educators, you're looking at progression for students as well as probably for a grade. I guess my question and what I would ask going forward is, how do we take those two what now are separate presentations and somehow present to the board how we're doing in the areas that you're monitoring, reading, math, you know, and other areas of that social emotional, how we're doing on a grade level and as a school level? Because it doesn't seem like when we look at student performance data, as we say in the disclaimers and the slides that are given at the outset, that's old data, it's from last year. But how do we do at the end of this year by your own standards, by your, by what you as educators are looking at? And if it's not standardized exams, that's fine. But these are snapshots, but at what point can we, are we, it can be presented to the board that we look at it on a grade level from your own lens in this, in this way?
That's a really big question. I mean, I think what I can share with you is that your question is a good one. And we're always looking to make connections from our work to the board and helping everyone to understand not only the work that happens on a daily basis, but how this informs for Andrea and I the work that we do while we sit on the balcony and we take a look at our curriculum and we take a look at instruction and the decisions that we make moving forward. There's so much data work that goes on on a daily basis. So at a small snapshot, for example, with F and P, we're looking at the alignment of our F and P scores to our state data. It was my own data project this year to take a look at how our students are progressing over time, in particular in third grade, and the alignment and the pattern and trend and the relationship between F and P data and how students are progressing on their third grade state exam and then moving on to fourth and fifth grade. For us this year, it was around consistency training. And in order to have reliable data, we needed to give that time to consistency training and really push back into the work of F and P so that moving forward as we take a look at the pattern and trend and the growth of our third graders in particular over time. And then is that an indicator of aptitude, is it an indicator of future success? And then how we take that information and bring it back to the instructional level and how we can really polish and inform the type of reading instruction that we want to see on a daily basis in our classrooms. And that's where we, that's where it turns to our professional learning community, to the good work that's happening with our literacy coach, to the amazing shifts in practice that we're seeing on a daily basis in our classrooms and informing us and looking at where we want Dow's Lane to be and the types of readers and writers and mathematicians that we're looking to grow as a vision. So when students leave our, our hands and our hugs and they move on to Main Street School and beyond, that we've set a strong and motivational foundation for them to be those deep readers and those mathematical flexible thinkers that can approach the work that's going to become more complex. So I offer that as an opportunity. I think we're always looking for opportunities to help inform our work and make those connections. The more we work with you to build those connections and bring clarity, the more it helps us as an administrative team to move our work forward. So I would look to Raina and Chris in the future and how we can work together to have those types of conversations. Thank you.
So I think you're asking a different question. I think you're asking to look at something over time. And I would say that that's not the purpose of AIMS Web. I think we use it as a benchmark to inform our instruction, our decision-making, especially at the K3 level. You know, some people say, you know, grade three is the grade equalizer. You know, you want kids reading at a certain level by grade three because developmentally, how kids grow over time, especially in K1 and 2, is not, is not necessarily going to be, we're not going to demonstrate that to you because we believe that developmentally, each kid is going to get there at their own time. So we have a benchmark, right? So, and it's why New York State starts testing in third grade. So our benchmark is really third grade. So I don't know that we would ever show this to you in some other way and I don't think it's the purpose of it, to be honest with you. And, you know, I look to Deb, Andrea, and Joyce to, you know, agree or disagree with that. I think what we want to show is that we are responding, that we've set a benchmark, that we know where we want our kids to be. I think it speaks to Brian's question a little bit, right? Like, what's your range, like what are you looking for? And having clarity around that. This is data that informs our work. I don't think it's data actually that informs the Board of Education. I think that our work does, I think our process does, and our evidence to you that we are using data to make these decisions. But I don't know that especially at the K2 level, that I would ever want to show you data and say, this is how I know we're making progress because developmentally, I would argue that that's not even appropriate. So you can ask that question again when Joyce gets up.
Well, I both. I guess, I mean, I'll, let me push back and disagree with that, I guess, a little bit because at least when I see this chart here, which is at the kindergarten level, it does show progress in terms of how those learners are moving along their path. I think at least as a board, we recognize that our youngest students, especially K3, 2, are going to move at different paths and each student, you probably, there's more variation probably in that cohort of kids than if you look at 10, 11, and 12 graders. I think we recognize that, so, but I do think this has value. But I think looking at like, for example, the third grade chart where we saw all the different mid-module and end-of-year assessments, go to Deb's report, then overlay that with our student performance to see, okay, you know, our third graders were averaging 13 on, you know, these five, by the state tests, they either exceeded or underperformed. I think that type of correlation that Deb was talking about, which is to marry the performance and what we're seeing at the school level together to give us more of a top-level view.
So that was the examples that I would say were presented last week. So we talked about this this morning at Curriculum Council, right? That, so this year, it worked out that our performance report was one week and now this, right, they came close together. But that's exactly where, so what you saw was that chunk of it last week, which is how we look at the data from our third grade state assessment and then we look at what practices we're doing. And those practices roll right into the module assessments.
So I think from our, from the perch, the one thing I would disagree, I agree with you, I'm sorry, Raina, is that like, so we want to try to draw some conclusions at the end of the day. I think it's what you said, Deb, right? And in order to be able to take what you did last week, which to me is very important, I know we have differing opinions. But again, when I look at what you presented last week in a little bit of a nutshell, I know that in third grade last year, 27% of the kids weren't proficient. For whatever reason, right? I know it's third grade, it's the first time they test, it is what it is. When I come and you show me this, this week, and I see that growth, I can make some conclusions about, okay. So go, and it is somewhat predictive, right? I know just, AIMS Web is relatively predictive of growth. So what is it called, rate of improvement, is that what it, in AIMS Web, is it, right? ROI, right, not return on investment, rate of improvement. But you see, you see, okay, we're making, we can make, we can make, draw a conclusion without getting into the weeds. So I think what your point was, Raina, right? That there's progress being made, right? And then when we see that final pyramid, to Brian's point, we can, we can make some, like, wait, wait, some of these things that we're investing in, a lot of the counselor and so forth, are giving us another ROI, I think.
And I suppose my only point is that after three years of being educated on this, having not been an educator, it's all valuable, it's all been, it's been so valuable to learn how you assess, how you go about your practice of teaching, educating, assessing, I mean, and both reports to me are invaluable, we need them as a board. But to sit in our position, I still stay here three years later saying, how do I make sense? Or what is, what is the responsibility as a board member to take that, take this, and somehow marry them together? And that's to me, I only leave you with, because we've talked over the years that these presentations are so hard to do. You're presenting to non-educators, you're taking years' worth of work, years' worth of amazing work in educating our children. And how do you demonstrate, which is our responsibility to make sure, to we ensure that this district's moving in the right direction? We believe it, but we have to see evidence of it. So that's the only, my only comment in looking at this is I'm still, I still struggle with that. I don't, I don't have an answer, but I just put that to both of you, and Joyce will talk about that as well. It's, it's, it's still something I think that this board is going to wrestle with and I'm not sure where you go, but I would suggest we are much closer than we were three years ago.
Without question, I think there's room to grow and I think you can take pieces of some of the information that's being shared today, maybe not in the same exact way that's being presented. But there can be that opportunity to actually do some alignment and analysis among different data sets. And I think that's the direction that we're going. So I think we'll have a different vision and I think you've seen those steps as you referenced. I think you've seen the two areas kind of merging right now.
And just to piggyback on what Deb was saying, I think, you know, as a board, you have to the extent the data, the experience, whatever is showing, here's an area where we aren't progressing as much as we want. That's what we're going to probably hear from you, we need more money for X or Y. And I think to be able to come to us and identify, here's what we're seeing based on our experience and based on that, we think next year, we may need to do this. And it may not be that there's a cost to it, it may just be we need to rethink our PD on the lesson or we may want to restructure something which is at a building level and frankly, the board doesn't need to get involved in that. I think to the extent you're seeing something and you say, we're going to handle it, great, go off and do it. But to the extent it's going to be, we need another coach or we need to bring in some other program, that's where I think it would be helpful for the board to understand what type of financial implications there may be to help us to continue to grow and progress.
And I also say to that point that, I mean, not only were the past presentations necessary to understand this presentation, there's no way we could get to this point without receiving what we received last year. But I think, other than Dave, those of us who are non-educators, we needed that basis in order to get to this point. I also think we needed to examine, in the format that was presented in the past, to even understand assessment and to understand the tie between assessment and professional development. Because when I hear you tonight talking about assessment at the grade level, school level, grade level, individual level, that to me also speaks to, when do you find the time to do that? When do you find the time to sit down and sit and look at this data? So we're going to be putting an emphasis on data and we want to get to this place. And it also reaffirms for those of us on the board how important the PLRDs are, professional development, and the money that goes towards that. So it's been a work in progress, but thank you for getting us to this point. And I only leave you with the next kind of trajectory if it's possible. I don't, I don't know how it gets done, but I think, I think we can get there.
I agree with you, Deb, in terms of having the prior presentations because I have really felt, found that very helpful when we get the new presentations, reflecting on the old ones, getting, you know, a base and then going forward. And it really does bring, remind us of where we were a year ago, but just the history. And so you can see the growth, you guys are living it, but we're not. This was a great presentation. On slide number 18, you list eight bullet points of different ways of using data to create a picture of the classroom, of the student. And you speak about RTI intervention tier two and you showed us, you know, early intervention, the beginning of the year, the growth over the year, these students, you know, not needing as much intervention. But I was wondering if you could speak of using this, I'm making an assumption here, using these same data points and what goes on throughout the school day? Because you also talk about how teachers also use this to reflect on their own practice, right? And their instruction, whether it's going back and teaching a particular unit or going forward, how to teach certain things. So what does this look like for a student who is, for students that are not struggling and are there, or maybe even exceeding the grade level, if you want to say that? And what does it look like, what systems are in place for those children that you can push them forward?
We love that you asked that question because we're thinking about all students each and every day. So what we shared with you were specifically for students who are struggling and falling within a certain percentile. But we use our data always to mind for those students that are on or above grade level and how that information informs instruction. So when we think about instructional practices, that can really be differentiated for our highest achievers and how we're working with our coaches. You know, we align our coaching cycles individually with teachers, but we also take a look at when our units begin and end. And we use our learning sessions through literacy and math to take place at the time of our mid-module assessment so that we can come back together and take a look at our assessment data as a team and not only make those decisions that inform RTI and inform our interventionists, but then how that data informs our teachers. For those students that are already there, who are not getting pulled out for instructional support during, let's say, our flex time in our master schedule, and what types of experiences are we providing for them? One of the best instructional practices that we've polished and continued to work on is our station teaching, particularly in math, where we have students that are engaging in more deeper, greater application of their math. They have their fluency, they have their automaticity, their foundational mathematical reasoning is there. So what types of experiences can we provide for them that continues to push them further? It's more application, it's more that design thinking process where they're using their math in a different way, creating story problems around math, let's say for a kindergartner, versus just identifying parts to whole as a number bond. We have children that are working in different ways with their numbers. For reading, it's been around the work with F and P. To really look at not only what those reading levels are for, so for our students that are struggling, yes, we're looking at where they're struggling, there's foundational gaps that are missing. We're using our intervention, our RTI MTSS model to fill those gaps. But knowing that while we're filling those gaps, it'll pull out. that are pullout, tier, tier-one instruction is going on each and every day. For those highest readers, for those children that are at grade level or above, the work that we've been doing to explicitly explore building our reading muscles, and what are those strategies and tools that those readers need to progress to the next level? That has been some of the most remarkable and changing work, as we really journey to teach readers and not teach reading. So I share that with you, because that has been some of the most transformative work that has gone on at Dowslane this year, through the work of our coach, through the work of our PD and our learning sessions, it's really shifted to not be satisfied if a child's reading on grade level. We are thrilled for them. We wish we had a magic wand and we brought everyone to read on grade level and to remove their struggle. But for those children who are on grade level, there's text complexity, there are specific strategies, there are specific reading moves that children can really be taught into doing through small group, through conferencing, through more of a book club and literacy circle type of model, where they don't need that explicit foundational instruction through guided reading, they need to take their reading further. And that's where we explore our resources, so to speak to Brian, and looking for where those resources will be, and getting that text into children's hands that's authentic and just right for them. Those are those opportunities where we take every child where they are and the use of our data, and we look to help them make progress and reach their highest potential. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Chapnick, I think the floor is yours.
Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, why don't you just stop reading?
So, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. I really do want to say that so much of what Deb and Andrea did a beautiful job, I want to say that, because so much of what they shared, I feel like I'm going to build upon, and it might sound a little bit repetitive, but that's a really good sign, it means that we are a really solid K-5 system within a K-12 system. And I know you've heard, you know, every year I get up after Deb and Andrea, or I get up after Dowslane, and I feel like I say that over and over, but I think that we've gotten really, really good at our, working as a team, articulating not just amongst us and our administrative team, but with our teachers' K-5. And so when you mentioned, you know, the super tense conference days and those PLRD days, so Deb, you asked, like, when does this stuff happen? You know, we're so conscious of how precious time is for us in terms of the ability to bring teachers together around a topic that drives what our work that we're doing forward in a way that it impacts students. And so we choose our topic, that super tense conference day, specifically to support K-5 work, and so Deb and Andrea spoke about the F&amp;P work. You know, there's math work that we do that happens at the K-5 level. All of those experiences work to support the K-5 system, and work towards supporting what you're talking about, the progress of students over time. So I think for us, it's a lot easier to speak about specific examples of how we mine data at a, at a, at a module assessment level, we look at specific questions, and then we look at the instruction related to how the students did. That's how we monitor if we're being successful, because we're breaking it down for an individual student or a class of students, less so than we do at that global piece that you're talking about, Raina, to set up that paper presentation. Okay. So on to my slide. Um, I have to see where I get to. So similar to what Deb and Andrea shared, we have done this work around our unit planners. I too really like this format, you know, of looking across time, because it really showed us that we had a progression of our work. So no change happens quickly, and we all know that, we're sitting in this room, and sometimes you think, gosh, there's still so many, like, what? But I think we're more thoughtful, and we're methodical, and we make plans, we actually see the results that we want to see ultimately when we get there. And so one of you mentioned, like, how do you know if the goals will come off or they'll continue? I think our theories of action are example, I think it's what year is this, the theories of action seven? Seven. And they still sit, like, so well as the umbrella to the work that we're doing, and we still continue to progress towards what we envision as where we should be. Every year we make progress, and we're doing great things. I don't know that we'll ever be there, and when we are, it would be like looking to say, how do we revise them to then continue the buildup? Having those have really grounded us. And so similarly, having our work around unit planners, so, teaching through the understanding by design, or UBD model, we started out in 2016, 17, similar to Dowslane, of again, this K-5 system, looking at just the essential questions. So really, the idea around the shift in our instructional approach was this idea of teaching thinking, because we want our kids to be deep thinkers. And so we frame all of our teaching with a big question, and so that's our essential question. So the starting point for all of our classrooms was just getting those up, just getting those in the classroom so that they were visible, and they could be referenced by teachers, you know, really at the beginning, it was just at the beginning of a, of a unit of study. And then as we went into 2017 and 18, we really looked at how we were using the essential questions. So great, they're up in the classroom now, check, they're visible, we can see them. But how do we know that they're actually having an impact on student learning? Like, how are they really being used not just at the beginning of a lesson, or as art around the classroom, but really that they're used for, as an instructional tool? And so we started to look at where teachers were using them, so not just at the launch, but where it punctuated within a unit of study. So was it part of an exit ticket? Was it on a mid-assessment? Was it on a post-assessment? Were they using it pre-assessment? Was it just a response to something? Was it embedded? And so we really looked at the multiple places where students were able to revisit their thinking around an essential question, and if, and how their thinking changed or developed over time across a unit of study. Because that's really what the, that's why we use the questions, to push the thinking. And if it wasn't happening, well, it made us think, is that the right question? Like, does the question really match? Like, what are we, what's this unit really about? So we started asking that question a lot in 2017, 18. You know, wait a second, we're asking that, but everything else we're teaching doesn't necessarily align with that, so maybe it's our essential question that needs to be revised. So we did a lot of work looking at the essential questions, looking at the student notebook responses, the exit tickets, looking at our student work, and how we need to revise those essential questions. And then that brought us into 2018 and 19, where our expectation now, through my observation process, similar to what Deb and Andrea shared, you know, when teachers come to their pre-observation meetings, they bring their unit planners, and the conversation is, so how are you, you know, where does the essential question fall within this lesson or within this unit? Where is it going to happen? And really, it's not just about the question, it's about the thinking. How are you developing, developing student thinking throughout this unit of study? And then when we have our post, I look for evidence during the observation, and then when we come back to the post conversation, we follow up to talk about, you know, what evidence I saw in the classroom, or they share evidence that I might not have seen because it didn't happen in that lesson, but it happens in a lesson I, the day before, or lesson five, lessons away. But we're trying to create this consistency around pushing student thinking with the guidance of the essential questions. Similar to Dowslane, mine says YAG, but the year at a glance, was this opportunity to map out all of the essential questions, so that rather than an essential question sitting in isolation, because our really good essential questions cut across different content areas. So if you say what is fair, that's our character building question for, which is an amazing question, what is fair? But it's also a math essential question when we get to fractions, what is fair? So for students to be able to transfer, which we've heard is one of our goals, is we want them to transfer their thinking, how can they take it, what they're talking about and thinking in a math lesson, then when we share something in ELA around an experience with, let's say, two characters in a book, and they can relate the what is fair in a different way, we're seeing evidence of transfer. And so that's the build over time around our instructional practice using essential questions. So next, to develop the balanced assessment system that measures students' content knowledge, skills, and dispositional thinking, in other words, how will we know? So interestingly, in 2016, you know, we, we have had assessments in place, right? This wasn't like, oh, we came to the table with no assessment. But what we had now, we're assessed, we had started working on our unit planners, and we needed to start to say, like, how do our unit planners work along with the assessment? Does the assessment match all the other components of our unit planner? And if it doesn't, is it our unit planner that needs to be revised, or is it our assessment that needs to be revised? And so we started to do a lot of this work around tagging. So we tagged to see where the alignment happens in our unit planners. Similar to what Deb and Andrea said, you know, we started with, you know, just sort of figuring out what kinds of assessments, you know, that we would need to develop. I would say 2017, 18 for us at Main Street was a big push and turn for us, where we actually had to talk about, what does a balanced system of assessment mean? I mean, I know we had to talk about that here, what does that even mean to all of us? So we actually did a whole, we did that administrative council and experience for us to make sure we were on the same page, but we all brought it back to our buildings to say, what does that mean? And to get on that same page is not as easy as it sounds. We all come to the table with different experiences. And so, one of your questions earlier was about the data piece. I think a big push for us has been to move away from summative and really look at the formative experiences. So, when you talk about the students who are at a higher level or where they are, you know, we're using our data all the time formatively, so that our expectation is that we are teaching until our students get it. It's no longer this idea of like, oh, we taught it, we're moving on, too bad you didn't get it, pick it up somewhere else. We don't teach like that anymore. You know, we feel this responsibility, and our data is what we use to support this effort to really meet the needs of all of our students, whether they're struggling at grade level or exceeding. And that's where that piece comes in. And so then we actually started to talk about aquatic, like, when, one of the big shifts for us around, around assessment was looking at what we call facets of understanding. And so we looked at the different types of assessments that we were doing, to see, like, what were they assessing for? Were they the, like, explanation kinds of assessments, or are they interpretive, or are they application, perspective, empathy, self-knowledge? Those are the six facets of understanding. And we started to, well, we had a lot of explanation, which is sort of like how we went to school, like, tell me what it was, just explain it back, right? Like, it wasn't a lot of, like, big thinking around it. You know, we had, and so, last year we gave some examples of how we made some shifts in that assessment, I shared an empathy example, where it was taking on the persona of someone in a historical perspective. So we started to do work in looking at our assessments to make that shift. Really, we learned about it in 17, 18, we dabbled in it and made a goal to try it at least one area, and then I'd say in 2018, 19, we're really looking at the alignment of our planners related to all of our assessments. We are, like, still making this a goal, like, this is just the beginning of the work. Just like you said, Deb, when do you find the time for this? It's, it's time, it takes time, and it's thoughtful, and we want them to be carefully designed assessments that are truly assessing for, what's this unit really about? You know, we want to make sure that we're not just asking the essential question that we asked at the beginning, but we want to craft an experience in an assessment that gives students an opportunity to demonstrate their understanding without giving that, you know, sort of explanation. They're actually able to show application, and that they've done some thinking to come to it. You know, it's, it's the days of just giving the same math problem with different numbers, it's not really how we operate any, they're smiling because that's what we did, we had that. We don't really do that anymore. We teach into the fluency, you know, the, the concept, and then we give them a whole new problem at the end, and say, like, demonstrate your understanding, because that's what our understanding by design approach is all about. So you heard Deb and Andrea talk about response intervention, I just put it up here as, like, an overview, so you could see the graphics of the tier one, tier two, tier three. I really put it up here because I, I want to make sure I say this very clearly, that it is never about one data point, that the biggest shift for us in practice is that we are looking at multiple data points whenever we're making decisions. Because no child is based on one moment in time. And so I think that slide you had was excellent, the one that had the first grade with all the pieces that showed the whole puzzle, because we really want a picture of what's happening, and one data point does not tell the story. You know, often, like, multiple, we still have to read between the lines sometimes about, you know, data can tell us what we want it to tell us sometimes, so we want to make sure we're looking at it in a consistent way. So our response to intervention system is K-5. I mean, we have worked at developing it really consistently, and our approach is consistent. And so we have this tier one, following instruction in the classroom, what all students are getting. Then we have the students who, even in the classroom, let's say they're having a struggle in the classroom, so that happens, that a teacher teaches something and a student is not successful. Well, then the teacher puts an intervention in place for that student. It could be different than what other students are getting, but when Deb and Andrea talk about conferencing or small group, that's where that intervention would happen for a student. Then they do something called progress monitor, they monitor the success of that intervention. And if it's successful, awesome, right? They've done it at work, the student keeps going. But if it's not successful, the teacher has an opportunity to come together with other teachers, and Deb and Andrea shared this, through what we call a teacher response team. And they can present ideas and thinking, and then they, they come up with a more formal, formulaized, form, oh goodness, I did, a more formal plan, sorry, a more formal plan that they put in place in the classroom, and then they put it in a set amount of time. So they say, six weeks, I'm going to monitor for this targeted intervention, and I'm going to do this, this amount of days, and this is the percentage I'm looking for. So I heard you asking for percentages. So teachers do this. If it's successful, great, we move on. If it's not, the teacher refers the student to what we call our RTI team. Then the RTI team looks at the bigger picture of the student, and if the data shows, which in an example it would, that they need additional support, that's when they move to a tier-two intervention. And the tier-two intervention is typically delivered by an interventionist. So, with the tier-two, it's, it's, let's say, it's three days a week for 30 minutes in a group of six. That tier-two interventionist is also doing that data collection and progress monitoring in a finite amount of time. Deb and Andrea talked about the data team, that's when we look as a, at every student, every level of student, we come together. And then they say, did it work? Well, if it's working, then we decide, is it time for that student to be exited out of that support? Or if it's not working, that's how we decide if they're moving to a tier-three. And so tier-three means that it's an increase in duration, which means, let's say, it went from 30 minutes to 40 minutes, in time, so it could be from three days to five days, and it could also mean a decrease in the number of students who are part of that experience. So if we went from five students, we went to two students. So we have these systems for academic intervention, and we have those data points up there for academics, so New York State Test, we have, and for Main Street School, we have AIS to consider also, because that's Academic Intervention Services. That's what the state puts out for, based on the New York State Test and where students fall, based on a cut point given by the state. If students fall below that cut point, they have to be delivered academic intervention support. The state aligns with us in that they now say, you have to have multiple data points. That state data point is not enough to say a student needs to get support, because that's one moment in time for a student. And so that just reinforces our system around RTI. So I say that about the academic piece, because we are so good at that. You know, we've done, been working really hard, and we have great systems, we have staffing, right? I have interventionists for ELA, I have an interventionist for math. Now we really are working on the behavioral mirror to what we do for academic, for tier, for our tier interventions. I could talk about it. I'll go back to the question. So, I'll be quick on this. So for our, for our behavioral ones, I do want to go back to what Raina shared for the action plan for the program assessment for the K-5 counselor. And so an example for what we have for the counselor, and thank you, I will reiterate what everyone has said, it's huge, it is tremendous for, for us to have the additional support for social, emotional learning for our students. We are seeing an increase in challenging behaviors, we are seeing an increase for students just negotiating social situations. We are, I'm going to talk about attendance soon, we're seeing an increase around a lot of issues that we know that with the right support, we can do what we've done for students academically, behaviorally. We just need, are working on developing that system, and having the right staff supports that. So for, for the counselor, the tier-one interventionist for push-in, everybody has those lessons. Her tier-two interventions come similarly to what Deb and Andrea shared, is, you know, when we have behavior reflection sheets also, we also have teacher input, and we use this screen, a, a, sort of a screener of sorts to give us some more information. So when a student is not able to demonstrate success in an area, that raises a concern, like, what other supports do we have? So we have provided support for students in a tier-two model, which is a small group. And we actually started the tier-two model, it's like, that's not really tier-two, but just to get our, our school counselor sort of set up in a group model, we set up this year with the new students who came to Irvington. So we started her off with a small group of students, just our new students, and she set goals with the new students, just about acclamation to our community, and she progress monitored their goal of how they were doing. monitored their goal of how they were doing about getting involved with the community at Main Street School. So, that helped us set a model for using a tier system for a small group. And then, we formed small groups, only a couple, because it's just our first year, but really to see how we could support students. And then, when we had students who couldn't meet that goal, similar to Deb and Andrea, at Dow's, we provided tier three, which is more that one-on-one coaching in an environment. So, if the struggle is a recess, you know, Ms. Kane will go to recess to support the student and give some onsite coaching in a very sensitive way, in a way that supports the student. But, you know, typically for our students who are getting up there in tiers, it's because they're not able to take that tier one experience and transfer it on their own, and they need additional support. And having a school counselor has provided, just scratching the surface so far, of what we think we're going to be capable of doing to support students behaviorally. This is just another example. I thought it's helpful to see that visual, because it's a process. There is no like start and end, it is ongoing. You're constantly looking at the data. We are putting interventions in place. We are monitoring them for progress. We are assessing their success. We are continuing or we are discontinuing, depending on what's happening. And then, we come back to look at the data to say, like, does something have to be added? And then, we go through that again. And these are similar to Dow's Lane examples of the data points that we're using. I think they explained it well. So, for Main Street School, I presented a little bit differently, but very similar to what Dow's Lane shared. So, what you see up there is September, January, and like my little notes, like summer box. So, if you look at reading RTI for this year, we had a total of 26, it's terrible, 26 students in September. Twelve of those students were tier two, and that again goes to the frequency and duration, and 14 of them were tier three. So, our interventionists put targeted interventions in place, supporting the student based on needs, so our groups are formed, like for reading, fluency group or comprehension group, so they're targeted and working towards what they need. And we also have students who get word work experiences also. If you look at January, our total number of students went up. But, if you look at our movement for students from our tier two, we had eight, we went from 14 tier three students to nine tier three students, so some students moved from tier three to tier two. And then, if you look, it says five students had a reduction in services, two students exited, and three students entered. So, we are still looking at the model of like, if we have a tier three student, we don't just like drop the tier three student, right? Based on one data point. We're never going to use one data point to make a decision. That's where that comes in. So, some students move from tier three to tier two, and then, we look at the next benchmark to say, are they ready to move out of RTI support? Similar to math, similarly math, had the total of 23 students. We went down to 19 students. We started with 15, eight in tier three. We went down to six in tier three. We started with 15 in tier two and went to 13. So, three students had a reduction in services, four students exited, one student entered. And so, that's it. Our data lets us see how many students are entering. As at Main Street, we see, I think you would see, our numbers are a little lower in terms of our exit and entering than I would say that we see at Dow's Lane, just because of where students are in their learning, you know? Just like someone mentioned, like in high school, we see a different level, which is good, because that number is what we would expect. So, RTI counseling I have up there with school counselor, and I have our school psychologist. So, I shared already experiences for the school counselor. And you can see September, we didn't have any tier two or tier three. But you can see by January, we had nine students in tier two. And actually, now, if we were going to do, I could tell you, we have two students in tier three. So, we have nine students entered, seven students participated in the intervention, and six students met the goal. So, in our counseling groups, we have very targeted goals that are measured, and if a student meets that goal, then they're exited. If they don't, then we decide if they're going to go on for a more targeted intervention. Our psychologist is up there, because you know, prior to getting a school counselor, we did not support, like, we supported students with the resources that we had, but we were spreading really thin. So, our school psychologist supports all of our mandated students, so all of our students who have counseling on their IEPs or individualized education, that's, I mean, and she's also our CSE chairperson, she has a lot of responsibility. But she also services students through our RTI, when it's a skill set that that's specific to what she has. So, she runs an executive functioning group. So, of those groups, she has a 14 group, 14 K students in the building participate in executive functioning, and that group is run by our school psychologist. So, that's both classified students and building level support for some of our students. So, that's her skill set, so she supports that work. There have been other examples where she supports individual students with RTI support. Typically, it's a tier three support where we might have a student having what we call a habits for success chart. It's kind of like a behavior chart with a targeted support need. She'll work with a student on that. We also do what we call check-in and check-outs with students, where sometimes students need to check in at the beginning of the day or after a recess. So, depending on the student and what the need is, we would be utilizing our school psychologist. So, our counselor has a role with like everyone, and then our counseling work, our school psychologist's work is more targeted and depends on the students that she's working on. So, I'm going to share another layer of work that we've done at Main Street School related to RTI. And so, it really surfaced when you said like, how do you know about kids? We started to see some patterns of behavior. I will say that when I was at the middle school, we had a very clear system of tracking attendance, and when I came to Main Street School, there really was no system for tracking attendance. I'm sure there was one previously, but when I got there, it had been. I'm sure there was, there had been one, but when I arrived, there wasn't one. So, I'm just saying, I didn't want anyone to say that. So, anyway, I'm going to just read this to you because it's so important. "School attendance is vital to a student's academic success at all levels. Research suggests that students with good attendance records are more likely to improve academically and to graduate compared to their peers with poor attendance records." So, attendance is so much more about than like showing up. Like, not being there can impact you not just academically, but socially, emotionally. And so, you know, we are the school that comes before middle school, you know? And so, I came with the middle school experience of tracking attendance and looking at how important it was for students to be at school, and why they weren't at school, and what that meant, and what do we do about that. So, this is a place where I can now say like what the social worker has a role in. So, I shared an example of what the school counselor, what the psychologist does, but our social worker, Gina, we all know Gina Menendez, she partnered with me on this attendance piece, because attendance piece at fourth and fifth grade is not just about the student, it's about parents and home experience also. They're nine, 10, and 11. So, the parents have like a big role in this. And Gina's role, many times in how she gets involved, is her role with families and how that homeschool connection happens. So, it made sense for her to be a partner in this work. So, we actually developed, we started to look at some data based on, and just started to ask some questions, you know, to students, you know, what's going on here? And started to notice patterns and noticed that there was some behavior stuff happening, and then noticing that that student had been tardy. And so, things started to like get on our radar. So, we developed a system of tracking attendance. It's called our Attendance Response System. And we now meet and we look at attendance data. And so, the first line of defense for everything is for our classroom teachers. So, our classroom teachers work hard to develop classroom communities where all of our students want to come to school and feel welcome and safe and excited about learning. But for some kids, there are blocks to that. And like, we want to make sure we have a way to figure that out. And so, we, the first line is if a student is tardy or absent, the classroom teacher reaches out to say like, hey, you know, it's really important to be at school, we've noticed your child's not here. Then, we start to look at like, is there a pattern for when they're not there? Is it certain day? Was there a certain activity happening? And it's, what it surfaced for us is like, we've had students who like math is the first part of the school day, and they don't come to school because math is their subject that they fear. And so, if we didn't look at this, we might not have figured that out and been able to put an intervention in place to support a student to feel successful coming to school and getting ready to start the day as part of math. You know, other examples of attendance have been like a parent dropping a student, dropped her daughter off to school at 8:35 every morning. Our doors open at 8:40. So, when we reached out to say like, your child's, she said, well, what do you mean, my child's been tardy to school? I dropped her off. She had been playing on the playground and not coming in when the buses came, and that was just a conversation and that was a fix. But for some students, it's not a fix. And so, there are steps in place, I'm going to do this in the next one. But wait, before you do that, I'll stop. So, I put the tiers up there to show you that it's also a tiered system. So, everything we're doing, you know, aligns with what happens with our RTI. So, the data. So, we, if you look at it, what we did is, if you look at fourth grade for attendance, the total number of students who are part of our Attendance Response System for fourth grade, for the first marking period, were 22. And so, 12 of the students, 12 of the students activated the systems and received an email from the teacher. So, 22 students we were looking at, but they didn't necessarily all activate the system. 12 of those students activated it, which meant that the teacher sent, hey, you're truly important to be at school, and sometimes that just rectified and it was done. Six students ended up doing the next level, which is where they meet with Ms. Menendez, and they do what's called the barriers for attendance. So, it's really just a conversation to say like, hey, what's going on? We've surfaced things like, you know, needing a checklist at home to get the backpack ready the night before, laying out your clothes. You know, morning routine can be really challenging for some families. So, if we can partner to make sure like there are steps in place to make sure students get there on time, our data has supported that this is worth it for us. So, then, we went to that, six students met, of those six students, four of those students, we saw improvement, and it was done. Two of those students, though, we didn't see improvement, so they ended up going to the next step and getting a letter from me, basically outlining how important attendance is and that they really need to be at school. Here's the number of tardies or absences. And we didn't actually move to anything further for fourth grade in that. There are next steps for that. So, the total number of tardies were 87, and the total number of absences were 57. So, marking period two, the data is there also, but I really want you to look at the graph, because through this work, we went from reducing our number, this is first and second marking period, we went from reducing our number of tardies from 87 to 60, which is like pretty significant. And we went from reducing our number of absences from 57 to 30. And so, all of that came from these interventions that are tiered and from supporting and from recognizing. You know, I think that parents have appreciated it, that someone, you know, we noticed, and that oftentimes it's surfacing a social, emotional issue that then we can support so students can access their academic learning. You know, it's, we are noticing that the social, emotional component is becoming a block for some students in accessing what they need to act. You know, we can't really expect them to like attend to their reading, you know, when they're coming in to undo their backpack, you know, and it's halfway through independent reading time, and they've missed the whole schedule for the day, they've missed their social experience with their peers. So, the data. Similarly, for fifth grade, I think the data really just supports that our interventions are worth it and that they're working, and that continuous look at the data will let us know how we need to adjust. Like, do we need to change the number of tardies and absences that we're looking at in a marking period? How do we keep track of students marking period to marking period? But there is a connection between, and someone's been asking, so I'll say this. So, we have started to look at like Ames Web data and where our students fall as part of a piece for attendance, as just a measure to see like, do we see something happening for students as one data point? So, it is on our radar to start looking at, seeing how we can correlate some of the attendance data with the academic performance data, because I think for parents especially, when you have difficult conversations like attendance, because it feels kind of personal, having some support to show how there's an academic impact really sends a message that, you know, it's not, it's so important to be here, because look what's happening for your child if they're not at school.
So, I, you know, I lay, I know I built upon what Andrea and Deb said. I hope I gave you glimpses into other data that we're using as well to support our students' academics and social and emotional growth. I reiterate that one data point's never going to tell the story. I think working as a system, we're continuously, continuously looking at the ways in which we use data. And to your point, like where do we find the time? I think we've always collected data. I think our focus now is like how are we using it in a much more targeted way? And I want to reiterate one more point, that with the support of our literacy coach and our math instructional coaches, we have really targeted our use of data to really validate for teachers the importance of collecting it, that it's not just about collecting it for collecting sake, but we're actually looking at like the level at which that data is changing the experience for the kids in the classroom, whether it's their math module learning, or it's their teaching and learning to be reading and writing workshop.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I make an observation?
Probably just a little closer, I'm having trouble hearing.
I want to say that what's most wonderful about hearing about the attendance project was the way, as a parent, hearing about it from the beginning of the year, so much of this is familiar to me, because you gave to all of the parents at orientation the same view that the school is maintaining on the data that was going to be collected. So, we knew about it ahead of time. We knew this was going to happen. And for those of us who may have thought about that, you know, occasional day when we don't quite get there on time, as a one-off, I really think you started us thinking about things differently from the beginning. And the way that you put that into place, kind of moving through to here where we can see the actions that you were taking behind the scenes, I think for those of us with less experience in the school system is incredibly inspiring. I will say that, because, you know, we've talked about so many different projects, but being able to watch this one from the start of the year until the end of the year is amazing. So, thank you.
I'm curious, it's been a long time since my children have been in Main Street School, and Rena was the principal, so I do remember being very strict about attendance. But how much do you think the start of the school day, if at all, attributes to tardiness? Parents going to work, leaving their child to get there? Because I can remember it clear as day. Attendance is always a little bit of an issue at Main Street if you're catching a train and you're leaving your child to their own devices to get to school, and they kind of take a while. And I remember that conversation, they saunter up the hill. Just curious if that's a factor at all?
So, I don't have that. I actually have the surprisingly, like, we actually look at some of the student data coming up from Dow's, and so, we talk about that, so that I am on the radar for like what to look out for as they come to Main Street School. And we think it should improve, because some of the reasons that students don't come, it's because Dow starts so early.
Right.
So, no, I actually, we have not had a major number of students like sauntering into the building.
Gotcha, yeah. And is there any correlation that you're seeing yet? Because I know it's just, it's probably the first year, but in terms of what you just said, like in terms of, would you, correlation with Dow's, anything that you've seen? I'm just curious if these are children that you, if you didn't intervene, you would expect at middle school were going to be, you'd be seeing the same issue?
I think the piece of telling you that Gina's such a big part of this is really important. So, Gina's K12, so she is aware of like student patterns as they come up from Dow's Lane, and then is part of this work and brings it to the middle school. I think that the reason why I felt so strongly about it was because of my experience at the middle school, having such a structured approach and thinking that like when they get to the middle school, it's one period a day, your attendance is taken period by period. You know, and at Main Street School, what are the habits that we can set up to make, to foster success for students? Like, what else could we be doing? Because I wasn't doing anything when I first got there, and it was kind of like this missing abyss in some ways. And now that I really started to look at the numbers and the reasons for it, I think we're giving kids the tools earlier on to create more success. So, will we ultimately be able to look at it? Yeah, we could look at some students in a longer-term study, just to see like, did our efforts at Main Street School and even at Dow's Lane help to see a difference in some of the students moving on? Yeah, it will be exciting to see.
Great, I was just going to say that, exciting, yeah.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
No, and obviously, the move to the middle school, there's a lot more demand on executive function and preparation, so it's fantastic.
Those checklists go a long way.
Yeah. Great.
And I will say, from last week's presentation on student performance, it was really great to see how the data and the results inform instruction, because that was also a piece that we got last week. I don't think we've had an opportunity to directly say that it really was informative and what we were looking for, so we don't have to talk about that tonight, because we got it last time. So, but thank you.
I want to comment, I love the evolution of this presentation, because like even last year, as a board, we're always, our question is always like, how do we know? How do we know? And we know it probably irritates everyone, because you guys live it, and we don't know, especially for me, my kids have been, you know, out of the elementary levels a long My kids have been, you know, out of the elementary levels a long time. And you guys are doing things that I have no idea what it means. So last year's presentation, you guys gave examples of, you know, kids' work and videos. And so, you know, an example of an exit ticket at an elementary level looks different than, I mean, in theory it's the same, but at the high school level, for example. So it's nice to see that evolution because it gives you a nice basis to, you know, now to the next step, which is to me, this year's presentation is more answering that question, how do you know? Because you've clearly demonstrated the use of various data points to build a picture on the child as a student, also as a class, how you use it for teachers, building their practice and being better. You know, everyone can always improve their, their craft, right? So throughout your presentation, I've heard about this partnership, you know, K-12 and building this continuum. But I've always looked at, right or wrong, Main Street is like that transition school. The kids are coming from, you know, K-three up fourth, fourth grade. And then fifth grade, you're kind of getting them ready now to go to middle school. So can you talk a little bit about how the work that you've done, how you helped transition these kids with this data? Like the partnership that you have with the middle school and using these data points and what you're doing here? If you're seeing, even if you're seeing any difference going, you know, helping these kids move up to the secondary level?
I, I suppose I can. I would say that I do, Main Street School is an elementary school. So I guess I could share that out loud with everybody.
Yeah, no, I agree, right.
I still see them very much in elementary school. I will get sixth grade as a transition year in our district, not really fifth grade. I, I am not, and maybe this is philosophical and I'm sharing, but I don't necessarily believe that we ready students for the next grade in the grade that they're in. I like them to live in the moment and experience that grade in the present, that this is their experience. I would say that we do things in terms of transition, in terms of opportunity, like introduction to the middle school, visiting the middle school, having administration come down and students come down, in terms of transition experiences.
Right.
In terms of data sharing, just like we articulate K-five, we, K-three to four, five, we articulate in the same way with our data sharing. So we have all, you know, we have a system for collecting data.
Yeah, I mean, I've talked about it.
So we have a, we have a warehouse for where we put data on students. And that information is accessible for all the way up. And the counselors get that information, so we articulate that data. We share the F and P data. We share our Ames Web data. So all of that is, is, is the story of a student. Again, not a single data point. Multiple data points are giving, are given as information about students. They don't start as a clean slate. And I think I say that in both ways because I think we appreciate students getting to start the year for teachers to get to know them and get to learn their own story. Students have opportunities to sort of reinvent themselves and shape who they are. But that goes part and parcel with that they have a history in our district. And we are very much a system. So no one starts out without their story being behind what is in front of you.
So, and just to be clear, I, I do agree, I, I think you misunderstood, or I said it poorly. I didn't mean that, you know, fifth grade is a year, that they're transitioning, getting ready for fifth grade. I, I know that there are those transition moments, like, you know, going up to the middle school and, you know, touring, for an example. I just meant more of the transition of sharing information and data. I guess, I guess, is it an assumption that all this goes with that?
Yeah, so if David and Allison were up next, they would be saying, just like Joyce said. I mean, I would like to know that they would be saying.
That feels like a question for Al, David and Allison. I mean, I would say if really the question would be for Joyce, how does Joyce use the data that's coming from Dow? I mean, I think that Joyce would be more equipped to answer that as the.
And she, right, and she did.
Right.
Right, right. And, and they, and, and also, you know, Andrea and Deb also shared, you know, going up, you know, to Main Street, so.
Okay. I have a question. So it's been great to hear from both schools more about the framework for MTSS and social emotional learning. That's been really helpful. I just wanted to get a better understanding on, I guess, I don't know if you call it slide thirty-one or page thirty-one? Slide, thank you colleague. So social skills rating scales? What is that? Is that like a?
So it's, well, it's in process. So I would say that Dr. Skirmerhorn, who's at Dow's Lane, she worked on, I think she collaborated, what'd she do with her? She collaborated with someone. And it's also public, there's a published rating scale for, with the other, with the other side? No, also, but before she did that, she actually brought it as something that she's worked on, Dr. Skirmerhorn. And it's, she took a rating scale that exists and she modified it, looking at points that would relate to what we could look at as a starting point. And she shared that with us as a way, because we had an idea for what we wanted to do for a group, but we felt like we needed something that the teachers could look at so we could have some consistency to say, is there, someone asked it earlier. Maury, you asked it about, like what are you looking at? And so we are looking at something more consistent, but again, it's our first year. So we wanted to dip our toe and to experience what that tier two could look like for counseling. But we are definitely looking at what is our screener or experience around behavior that would support, you know, our, our tiered level, tier two and tier three placement?
Yeah, like there's, there are proven documents, like desks of scales and stuff. So it's sort of like that, but it's, it's done by the teachers, sort of in their process of assessing. It's, it's like a, an assessment tool, but, but, but for SEL.
Right, so really for us, we use the, our behavior reflection sheets. That was one piece. We had teacher anecdotal information. And then when we looked at the makeup of the group, we said, you know, we need to put some, we need to give them one more thing. And so that's when we asked Dr. Skirmerhorn, could we use what you had as a tester just to see how it would work? And we did.
Very interesting, thank you.
And we're actually looking at, we're, we're actually looking at a norm tool, like purchasing something that we could use that would, that would be a more reliable and more consistent tool that we could use across the grade levels. So we're definitely.
Right, although with Dr. Skirmerhorn, it becomes more of a local assessment instead of a, you know, a local assessment that's based on, on, on proven practices. So it's not as if it has to be, you know, I just wanted to get a sense of what that was because it's different than, I think in Dow's, it's the behavior reflection sheets. Yeah, so I just wanted to get a sense of how that changed. Thank you.
I might add one thing. I haven't had any questions really because the presentations were spectacularly informative in every regard that I've asked after for three years. I really appreciate it very much. I would say though, based on some of the data you've presented here tonight alone, along with other stuff I've seen, the, going back to the budget conversation in terms of the social emotional framework component and the, of looking at the social work and stuff like that, you've, you've got a lot of really good data here to start putting together something that could probably look really nice to prepare for next year. Or to start using that money that we put aside or that hopefully we can sort it out at some point in the next week to start doing that work. It's all in there.
Good point.
Yeah.
I didn't show up, but I had the same enthusiasm as you had Andrea at the end of this. Very, very good, I appreciate it. So thank you so much.
Thank you all, you guys, ladies, fabulous job. Thank you.
Right, if we do, just before we let you go, are there any questions from the community regarding the presentation? Would you agree it's a great learning opportunity?
It wasn't quite fifteen minutes. I'm just saying, you have a chat, don't go on to the set, fifteen minutes. It was just a little longer.
So.
It was great, thank you.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you so much. So we will move to our consent agenda, which includes approval of the Westchester Panham School Board Association budget, which we and other participating school districts contribute to. The, the Westchester Panham School Board Association's nineteen-twenty Board of Directors, which have approved, includes myself as one of the members. Adoption of a policy fifty-one fifty for homeless children, which I guess is SED requirement. And then thank you, I guess Pauline and Doreen with, Pauline, thank you. With so many minutes ready to approve here, it's just been a great transition to get those ready. We also are looking to approve the appointment of a elementary teacher and a school psychologist, as well as some other contracts. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
A second.
Second.
Are there any questions before we vote on it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. We do have an opportunity now for questions or comments regarding the school district from our community members. Going once, going twice, very good. Our next meeting is Tuesday, May twenty-first, next week, to certify the results of the twenty nineteen-twenty budget vote, bond vote, and board member election. Very exciting day, we look forward.
Absolutely.
It's, we meet down by the vote.
We, we have, we have to meet and certify the results.
But the meeting's held at Main Street School.
At Main Street School.
Yes, it'll be at the Main Street School.
We, generally nine PM, once the polls are closed.
Very, very swift process, about fifteen, twenty minutes later, we, we have the results tabulated. And so we encourage everyone to, to turn out and vote on the Tuesday from nine AM to, no, seven AM to nine PM at the Main Street School. And so we will now adjourn to executive session. Could I get a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment history of particular persons?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.